We'll open the April 2nd, 2020 meeting of the Winchester Select Board. With me now is Select Board members Amy Shapiro, Susan Verdicchio, and other members of staff, including Jen Murphy from the Board of Health, Brian Sekely, Planning Department, Al Wile from the Building Department, James Gill from Department of Public Works, and Michelle Weber from the Human Resources Department. I'm not sure if there are any comments or questions from Board members right now, but we'll kind of take those as they come. We have set these Thursday morning meetings specifically for our response to the COVID-19 pandemic and dealing with emerging needs for the town during the state of emergency and some other related departmental needs as well. And I'm not sure if Lisa is on now. She's there. Amy or Susan, did you have any comments before we jump in?
I just wanted to quickly acknowledge all the first responders and healthcare professionals in Winchester and around the region, excuse me, for their hard work in helping us get through this. I think, you know, it's going to take diligence and care amongst all Winchester residents to get through this. So I would just encourage people to look out for their neighbors, their family, from a socially appropriate social distance, but look out for each other, be kind. And we will, you know, we're all in this together, so I think we'll get through it together.
Yeah, that's, you know, you said it all there. That's exactly what we have to do. We have to pull together. And remember, if you're out walking, it's best to stay home and save lives. But if you're out walking six feet apart is what you need to be doing, unless you're with some, you know, member of your family, that six feet apart doesn't really apply to them. But as you pass each other, you know, you can wave and you can say hi from six feet. That's fine. I find when I'm out, sometimes people act a little like guilty. I'm guilty about being outside. It's really fine to be outside. You just have to work on the six feet apart thing. And I really like what I think Revere sort of adopted, which is stay home, save lives, short and sweet, and that's what we all have to do. Stay home. But as Amy said, check in on your elderly neighbors, give them a wave when you're both outside. That's fine. We all have to stick together. So that's the end of my little speech. Thanks.
Can I just, can you guys hear me? This is Jackie Welch.
Oh, hey, Jackie. Sorry, I didn't realize that you were on.
Yeah, I was on from the beginning, but I think I was, I have to participate by phone right now. And I think I was somehow electronically muted, even though I couldn't control that. So I just dropped off and then came back on through a different Zoom number. So I'm glad you can hear me now. Thank you.
I didn't know if you had any comments, Jackie. Sorry, it's hard for me to see. I just see phone numbers on the screen, so.
Yeah, mine ends in 0862. Sorry about that.
No problem. If you had anything to comment on, we'll.
Well, I know we have a full agenda, but I just wanted to echo the comments of my colleagues on the board and also again praise town halls, specifically through the leadership of our town manager for all the hard work that they've been doing, as well as other committees and boards in our town. And also just to reiterate the good comments of the other board members. Thank you.
Great, thanks. So we'll jump around on the agenda a little bit. And maybe we'll start with the transfer station. Jay, I don't know if you can speak to anything in response to how things have been going and if there are any needed adjustments to the schedule or to the practices.
Looks like he is muted. The host, which is the town manager, who is probably the only person that can unmute him other than him.
Okay, well, I guess we'll just keep moving. Some of the agenda items are, you know, somewhat vague. So I'm not really sure, you know, outside of the clear ones. But I see Al Wile and Brian Sekely here. Is there something that in particular that you guys were looking to discuss?
Not, nothing that urgent. I will say that there are a few. We've been starting to get letters, and we're going to be starting probably to get a few more letters, if I would imagine, about kind of shutting down public hearings, public meetings related specifically to development, as this is met people. And this is not, we haven't even gotten, you know, 10. But we've gotten two letters with a probably a total of maybe 10 people, something like that, of basically saying that, you know, this is all well and good that you're trying to keep, you know, a sense of normalcy, try to keep going. But, you know, the idea of design reviews and even applications for buildings, that's for special permits or anything else, VBA otherwise, should just, should kind of just, you know, take a hold at the moment. So that's the only kind of information that's worth, you know, letting you know. At this time, everything else is very secondary, but this is, and this is not overwhelming. But I would say, like I said, about 10 households have kind of requested, not necessarily the planning board, but all kind of public meetings related, or sorry, hearings related to development should follow Boston and Cambridge and several others and just stop. That's all I have for you.
I'd like to add to that. I really think that the special permit process should be just curtailed for at least a month and maybe more. Normally, a special permit, as we all know, is more of a want than a need. And in this time, I think we should really be concentrating on needs only.
Is there a high volume of applications? And if we did kind of put a pause on things, you know, is there a way for kind of a hardship appeal? Because I know that, you know, a lot of people have been planning, you know, multiple years sometimes to do projects. And, you know, there's a financial component to it as well. And, you know, I think we have to be sensitive.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be that issue, definitely. Unfortunately, we're in the position we are in now. It's not, as I say, a lot of this stuff is wants, not needs. I don't, I don't see anything right now that's all that pressing, you know. It's, that can't wait. In regards to the financing, that is, that's an issue with a lot of these projects. But, you know, people are just going to have to learn that we're in a different ballgame right now. I have spoken to some of the developers who have pockets that go to their ankles. And they are pressing on, not trying to jam anything down our throat or anything. And the ones that are doing it are all projects that would be more by right and not using the special permit process. And they seem to think that that's, they wouldn't even consider special permitting right at this moment. And I've also spoken to them about the social distancing on some of the bigger projects. And they seem to be adhering to it to a certain point. One developer is only allowing one mechanic at a time. I mean, if it's a plumber, he'll let the plumbers in, work in the buildings. And then when they're done, an electrician could go in, but not both at the same time by reducing the number of men, personnel on the jobs, which I think is being diligent in the practice. But I can, prior to this, we were, the outlook of work coming up was quite extensive, as we have been now for 10 years. So there's a lot of work in the pipeline. I think it might get curtailed for a while on maybe the individual homeowners on their projects. But, and I think they'd be smart doing that because smaller projects is too many people on the job at the same time. It's just not, it's not a good working environment. Plus, you have the families in the home. So, but the larger projects can go on probably without a problem. Right now, unless we get a directive from the governor to shut the jobs down. That's another story. Inspections are going. We're doing some digital now, which works pretty good. I mean, a lot of the mechanics that we do deal with, we know them. I mean, they're reputable businesses and everything. And then there's some that we have to watch a little bit closer. Their expertise isn't all that good, but we'll get them through the project.
Okay, great. Thanks, Al. I think that Jay Gill is unmuted now. Jay, we had the transfer station on the agenda, and I don't know if there are any updates or recommendations.
I'm sorry, Mike, would we comment on the prior speaker's comments afterwards? Or would you like to hear something?
Before we take Jay, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. I just wanted to thank Brian and Mr. Sekely and Mr. Welch for participating this morning. We know you're super busy with so many important things, and we really appreciate your time and also appreciate your comments. I guess I just wanted to observe that, I think, through the, as far as the permit process goes, some residents who might otherwise want their voice heard on some projects, particularly development projects, they may not be as kind of adaptable or even knowledgeable about the process to engage in the process through, you know, the Zoom remote capability and that sort of thing. And I do think that it is in the town's interest for the boards, including the planning board, et cetera, to hear, you know, comments from the public. So I totally understand, and that may, you know, be part of why, you know, Boston came out with their decision on sort of putting a pause. So I do think that may make a lot of sense in Winchester, particularly for larger projects, so that we can ensure that the residents' voices are heard. That's in no way suggesting that, you know, we're not for anything or anything at all like that. It's just that we want the process to be as normal as possible. And we wouldn't want it to change simply because the hearings or other actions with respect to applications are continuing in a time period when things are not the same. So I just wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thanks, Jackie. Are there any other comments from Board members?
Mike, can I chime in? It's Lisa.
Sure.
So I had a conversation with the planning boards here yesterday about this very issue. And so I reached out to other town managers, and we're all trying to figure out what everybody else is doing. So it seems like the majority of folks are using Zoom and they're able to use it for public hearings and development projects. I think one idea that stood out was an Andover. They, people who don't have access to Zoom or the internet can still watch the hearing live on WinCam. And then they're able to call into a number and be able to interact that way. So it's not quite the same as being in person, but it's also, you know, better than trying to look on a phone or a computer screen, especially if there isn't access. So that's, Heather was going to check to make sure that all planning board meetings were live and whether that could be one accommodation. You know, and I don't know if, you know, we would be open to, by request only, having people, you know, come into another location that has a big screen, if they're unable to either watch WinCam or unable to access. So at least sort of giving people graduated levels of ability to participate. So just some thoughts.
I would just note that, I'm sorry, was that somebody else's voice?
Go for it, Jackie.
Okay, I was just going to add, you know, it sounds like it's definitely a time period when we need to be creative and think about all of these issues. So I totally appreciate what Ms. Wong has just said. I just am nevertheless concerned because a lot of projects, you know, it is good to hear, make sure that we're hearing everyone's voices. That's why they're public meetings typically in the first place. And even though some options may seem to make a lot of sense, it still may not, you know, provide the same level of access. And if a temporary pause, you know, would not deleteriously affect anything anyway, and particularly if other communities, including Boston, are doing this, it does seem like something we should give some consideration to. Just because often in that public process, there's a dialogue and an opportunity to make sure issues don't grow later, et cetera. So that's my only, those are my concerns. Thank you.
I was just going to answer Lisa's quick question, which is, so all of the planning board meetings actually are live on WinCam through Zoom. So they are, you could actually be watching on your television and call in through your, through any phone. So it's this weird mix of actually, in my opinion, I actually think it's more accessible for more people because that's not to say the product is better, but it is more accessible. The idea is that people that have childcare issues or mobility issues, or they're sick or whatever, they can actually participate in their home, through their home, which they were never, we never, that was never possible. The problem is that there's a little bit of education that has to happen with the technology to kind of make it, make it great. But, but again, I actually think it's actually more, or I don't think. It is more accessible to more people. More people can participate in public meetings through these, through this remote participation than otherwise. The problem is that there's a lot lost in the translation when it comes to specifically scale and mapping a building. It's hard to kind of, kind of see it because you're looking on either a small screen or on a TV screen. It's just a little bit different than actually being there, but that was it.
Thanks, Brian. So maybe we can look towards our next meeting at a recommendation on what it would look like to kind of more formally put some of those items on hold. And I specifically would like to see, you know, an ability for a kind of a hardship exemption for people in the case maybe someone's building, in addition on to bring their elderly parents, you know, to live with them because, you know, for a particular reason. And, you know, we want to make sure that we're keeping in mind kind of health and safety as well. So maybe for next meeting, we can kind of have that ongoing conversation with the Building Department, the Planning Department. If there aren't any other comments, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is the transfer station. Jay, I don't know if you have any comments or recommendations. All right, we'll come, we'll come back. Jay, you there? Is that you? No?
Nick's here from the transfer station.
Oh, Nick, okay.
I can give a quick update.
Thanks.
So the Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday schedule seems to be working in regards to us being able to get out the trash, to haul it up to Covanta. We're running both trucks that we have, but doesn't seem to be an issue. Thursday, Tuesday and Thursday are busy but not crazy, but Saturday is definitely a little crazy. We plan to continue to have a police detail for traffic at the corner of Swan and McKay.
Thanks, Nick. And I think that this was the kind of, this past Saturday was the first one where we tried these new hours and things were happening. And they're kind of exacerbating the problem. There was a truck that had, needed to be towed kind of out of the entrance area. So I think if you were kind of waiting to get in, it wasn't necessarily the volume that created that backup, even though there certainly was some. So that's not something we expect to be happening on a regular basis, hopefully, right?
Correct.
And in your experience, was there an ability for residents to properly social distance while they were there? You know, I know that we've kind of shifted these hours for our staff in some sense to keep their schedules alternating. But did it seem like people were still able to get the job done and keep somewhat apart?
Yeah, I mean, people are always at the transfer station inclined to be a little social. But for the most part, people are keeping their distance.
Is there anything else that you need on the town side to kind of facilitate the process?
It should be all right. What Jay and I have talked about that is making us a little weary is the opening of the swap shop. And if that should still be scheduled for the beginning of May, or should we tell people that's further off?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'd like to hear from the board, but that seems like it's a, would be kind of a nightmare in this circumstance. I don't know if other board members have comments on that in particular.
Yeah, it's just a question that we get fairly often.
Yeah, I think, you know, it's certainly, I mean, the swap shop is a different animal as you're talking about social distancing and just knowing how the virus can remain on plastics and metals and things like that for cardboard for a fairly long time. I think it probably is safe to say that we should probably at least move it back to the beginning of June at this point. That's my recommendation.
Yeah, I agree with that as well, just for the reasons you just stated. And also, sorry, Susan, if I jumped in too quickly there. But also because I think it kind of sends another kind of message supporting all the other communications by the town about just being aware of safety. So I agree with Amy. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with Amy as well.
Yeah, I think it's additional staff consideration because it does, you know, increase our staff's engagement at the transfer station too. So, okay, great. So we'll, unless there are other questions for Nick, then we'll move on to the, and we'll come back to some of these other state of emergency issues. Lisa, I don't know if there's anything in particular on that that you wanted to bring forward. I know Jen Murphy's here, and I don't know if we're going to do an update on kind of where things were.
We can certainly do that. Jen, I don't, are you on the phone and not on another call or webinar or multitasking like you're usually doing?
Hi, I'm here. Yep. Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Yep, we can hear you. Any updates from a public health standpoint? Let's see. So the case count has not changed as of today. And I think maybe we are also going to try to address the social distancing issue in outdoor settings. We have created a sign where we can hang in many different venues around town, perhaps at, around the Fells entrance to the Fells area as well. So those will be ready to go for Jay to assist us in getting them out and about around town very shortly. So it's just to reinforce that social distancing message even when outside. Let's see. I just wanted to make a sort of an overall statement about the cases that we are following in town. It runs the gamut of illness, but I just want to say that overall, the cases that we have seen have recovered very well. And I think that's just a nice message to put out there to give people an idea of what's happening. I mean, we see all types of ranges of symptoms around this disease, but people are recovering of those people that we have been tracking. And I think maybe somehow to get an update out to the community along those lines might be, might be helpful information for people. I know I get questions all the time, as you do as well, I'm sure. But to somehow convey that to the community about the status of the positive cases that we are following in town might be, might be a new tact we want to take at some point. In other words, we give the total case count, but also express how many people have recovered and so forth. So that's food for thought.
So I have a question, and maybe you've been doing this and I haven't seen it. But when you release information about the cases, do you talk about the age range? And I think there's some public conception that it really only is a serious illness if you're very old. So I think that issue might be useful to people as well.
Yeah, so we do that on a, the state does that on a county level. But our case count is so low right now. I'm not sure if we're at the point, well, I'm not sure we're at the point where if we did that, it would make sense. You know, we have a total case count of 24. So, yeah, at some point, we may, we may do that, Susan.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I know it's a difficult balance that we are trying to maintain. We want people to understand that our decisions for closures of public spaces are not really about an abundance of caution, as we normally would say, but really are evidence-based solutions to the pandemic. And so our numbers might be low because testing hasn't been, you know, at the level of other communities, but it's still very high risk. And, you know, we had raised the issue of some of those public spaces, including the Fells, being really very busy in the warmer weather. And I in particular was concerned after being there last weekend and seeing some videos that people posted on social media, that it may be that we, that signage is certainly helpful, but if there's the ability for us to reduce parking spaces in those areas. I mean, there were, you know, it was every inch of South Border Road and, you know, on the other side as well, their cars were lined down the street. And I don't know if that's a way, I mean, it's hard to keep people, and we can't really close down the Fells necessarily. But if there's a way that we can kind of manage the times that people are going there. I don't know if you have any thoughts about that, Jen?
Yes, so we would have to do that in conjunction with DCR. And I believe, Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, was somebody from Mike Day's office going to touch base with DCR? If not, I'm more than happy to try to coordinate something.
Yeah, loop back in with the rep. This was a pretty hot topic of conversation on Tuesday when we had a coordination meeting with the elected officials and with Stonem, who's also dealing with the same thing. So we're trying to have a coordinated response.
Great. So maybe we'll have an update at our next meeting or some sort of kind of policy recommendation as we move forward. We've been taking a lot of incremental steps, and I think that they've been helpful and people are getting it as they see the cases that are reported to the news. And just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can to communicate the severity of it and the impact, not just on everyone's individual health, but on the health of the community if you're not social distancing and being careful. So thank you. Jen, was there anything else that you wanted to report or suggest? I know that we've been a little bit reluctant to really push out the. I did, I know that we've been a little bit reluctant, um, to really push out the numbers, um, and you said there aren't any increases as of this morning, but what, what's our count as, um, at this point as far as, uh, positive, um, cases?
Right, so our total case count is 24, however, four of those cases are recovered. So our active case count right now is 20.
Is, now, does this count, um, for positives that I, this is the question I see people ask all the time, you know, if they're non-residents, but they come to Winchester Hospital and are tested positive, are those counted in those numbers?
No, it is strictly Winchester residents are only included in that number.
Okay, so if they may come to the hospital and they may be, um, even seeking treatment for COVID-19 and, um, but th- their numbers would count where they're, where they reside?
Where they reside, correct.
Okay, um, great, and in your conversations with the hospital, is there additional resources from the town that they are requesting or anything that we can do to, to support them right now?
Um, I believe Rick Heston has been the main, um, has been communicating with the hospital folks regularly. And, um, so he would have the best information on that.
Okay.
I don't know.
So Mike, if I could comment on that, so the, uh, I mean, we're having another coordination call with the hospital in a couple hours, but a- as of last Tuesday, I think the main focus was really on, on, um, PPEs, so the personal protective equipment, um, and trying to solicit donations, um, and I, I think in one of my updates I posted, um, the website that you go on to for Beth Israel Leahy that has the high priorities for donations that they need. Um, and we are talking down, down the road, you know, certainly if there is a huge uptick in, um, the need for, and need and ability and capacity for testing is working with them on what other, what kinds of police details they might need, um, any, any traffic calming measures or traffic diversion. Um, so those are things that are in, in the works, but I think right now it seems like the universal message across the board with every healthcare facility is, um, the PPE stuff. So, you know, go online, the, the state has a portal as well. Um, anyone with, you know, extra masks, any, um, you know, anything like that, you know, please, please donate those if you can.
Yeah, I, I know, you know, one of the big questions is that, um, you know, is this the, the calm before the storm? And, um, a lot of communities are preparing for this surge what they anticipate, um, coming and, um, is it your understanding from connecting with the hospital that they have enough, um, physical space for, for beds, whether to move out existing patients or, um, you know, to, to create, um, COVID-related, uh, space? I, I, I know we've had, um, the Congregational Church and some other, um, residents have, have inquired about that and offered space, um, for, um, for additional beds, and I, I don't know if that's something they see as a need.
Yeah, so this is actually a very good conversation because it's, I, I don't know if it's, um, a, a coordinated approach um, from the, um, you know, from the top down or bottom up. So I do know that the hospital has made internal space within the, um, the hospital itself and the various buildings um, in which they, they own and partner with to have additional space. Um, the other thing they also mentioned is working across the state. So for example, the state made, has been making public facilities and private facilities available. Um, you know, it sounds morbid, but you know, at Pittsburgh State, they use the Civic Center lot for a mortuary. Um, the DCU Center now has, I think, over 200 beds. So they're looking at sort of big facilities like that where they have a lot more capacity and control. Um, and I think the governor mentioned that, um, what they did at the DCU Center, they're looking at doing regionally throughout the state. So there, you know, it could be something around Boston and something in the Aramaca Valley and something near the Cape. So it looks like the state's expanding capacity. That being said, though, um, you know, it's interesting to note that, um, so Lexington, um, the state made a deal with a hotel in Lexington to house, um, homeless, um, individuals with, uh, COVID-19, um, symptoms. And, um, my understanding is that that was sort of done without consultation with the town. So I think, you know, we're having this kind of communication right now, but, um, you know, we, I think everyone's trying to, trying to, you know, work in different directions. So it's, it's something that, um, that we sort of have an eye on is we're, we're collaborating with the hospital, we're supporting them in their, in their efforts, but we also know that there's a lot happening on the state level that we're trying to, we're trying to see if they can improve communication with us.
Great, thanks, Lisa. I, I think it's going to be, uh, you know, an ongoing issue that we need to respond to that, is just evolving over time, so, um, it's good to hear that we're in close communication with other communities around us as well, because everybody's still trying to, you know, figure out, uh, what the need is as they go along. Are there any, um, questions or comments from, uh, board members on?
Yeah, um, this is Amy. Um, thanks, Jen, for being on the call this morning. Um, I just wanted to kind of, um, echo what you were saying about the, um, the information that we're sharing and sort of the tone. I think that I love your idea. I think that there's a lot of, um, mis- misunderstanding about the disease and certainly it's, it, it seems that it, uh, it affects various people in various different ways. So I think any type of information that we can provide about what, um, what we're seeing locally, um, in terms of symptoms and, and that people are recovering from this, but, um, I think that that would be from both a, just information standpoint, but also mental, like, just from people's mental health, um, and emotional health, just kind of understanding that there are people that are in our area that have, have gotten it. Let's not hide the, the reality, but, um, that they have, some of them, you know, that they're recovering and, um, that some of the sit, share what some of the symptoms are, um, just so we can, can try to curb some of the misinformation and uh, misunderstanding that's out there. So thank you.
Sure, I can, I can work with, with Lisa on conveying that information.
And, uh, you know, I, I just want to make sure that we're careful too. I mean, I, I, you know, we're still in the social distancing, um, phase of this, and, um, there's been public closures, um, of buildings and facilities and businesses and, you know, it's, I think initially there was this idea that this was something that affected people of a certain age and people that, um, had specific health concerns, but, um, there are, uh, people that are asymptomatic, um, that are i- in our community and not being tested, or, um, people that are, uh, you know, younger and healthy and still experiencing, uh, difficulty with it. So it's, um, as we said, just finding the balance of what we, what we're communicating, um, because we, maybe you're not, um, seeing at the local level what is, um, what's there. I don't know if there are any other board comments on, on that.
Just, yeah, just to follow up, I just want to be clear that I'm, that's what I'm proposing. I'm not proposing that we sugarcoat anything. Um, I just think that there's, um, you know, I think it's, it's, the more information we can provide about what patients are seeing and experiencing is going to help others understand the severity of it, but also understand for themselves and their family members when they see something that they, they know to, to react in, in a specific way. So that's, I'm not proposing that we sugarcoat this at all. Um, I understand the, um, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a terrible disease from everything I've heard, but I just, I think the more information we can share from the town perspective about what we're seeing locally, I think, um, you know, with still, still protecting people's privacy, um, I think is helpful.
Uh, so this is Lisa. Do you mind if I, I, I think these are all great ideas. I would love some feedback, uh, because as busy as we are pushing out information, um, I think we also rely on all of you to let us know are people hearing that information? Is there information overload? Do, do, are there other ways in which we can communicate this information? So obviously, the website is a repository really of, of all of this information. We try to have the highlights up there, but we know people aren't checking every day, um, and even if they're signing up for updates, it's just, it's a lot of information they're getting from, you know, the TV, the newspaper, us, the state, the federal government, I mean, you, you name it. I mean, yesterday I watched the governor of Massachusetts, and then I also watched the New York and New Hampshire press conferences just to see if there was any differences, so, um, there's just a lot of information. So any feedback that you have about what works and what doesn't work would be great, and or what specific information to highlight and which ones to kind of mute would be great.
A- any other comments, um, from board members? Lisa, um, I don't know which item you wanted to, to take up next. I, um, we had the, um, conversation with United Way, and I don't know if you want to wait for that or, um, get on to the other agenda items. I see that the Council on Aging is on the agenda as well.
Yeah, the Council on Aging is a kind of a standing, um, item, just in case they're asking us for, um, something specific that, you know, um, that, that's quicker than the 48-hour notification period. I, I don't have anything specific today from the Council on Aging. Um, they did have to tweak their request. I think they wanted to have a certain number of people, um, if I, I want to say it was $100 or $125 gift certificates. They asked me if they could increase it to 200 because of the length of, um, the stay-at-home order, and I thought that was fine. Uh, that we weren't gonna, you know, we weren't gonna micromanage exactly how many people and how much specifically they were gonna get each. Um, and we understand the adaptation in terms of, of, you know, the increasing length of the stay-at-home orders. Uh, but the larger discussion is, uh, that there's a number of agencies that have a need to respond very, very quickly to, um, community needs, uh, and it's a very individual thing. So it's not, it's not just, you know, what is, um, a whole subset of people need, but there's people with very unique circumstances who, um, whether it's food security, housing, anything that, um, is dealing with stabilizing their situation, families, the elderly, children. Um, so the, the, um, Mike had brought forward, um, uh, an idea from the United Way to help us coordinate all those resources. And the thought was that they could be a central repository of funds, um, and they're willing to help us, um, with the, the tools that we need, the intake process, um, uh, and have 100% of all the funds donated to the United Way for a Winchester fund, actually go, um, go back to the community. Um, so there's a number of benefits with setting up something through United Way. They're doing it through, from, for several towns around the area. Um, you know, they would set up a fundraising page, they would, um, we would have an intake process for the various nonprofits who might be too busy trying to outreach and deliver services to be able to do their own major fundraising effort. Um, and then another great thing about working with United Way is that they have other funds available. So if we have, um, people who are in need, then we can send them to United Way. We can look at the funds that we collect for various purposes, and they can also look at their other internal funds and, um, and find a way to help, help people with whatever their particular individual needs are. So the, uh, Mike and I had an, an initial conversation with United Way yesterday, um, and the next step really is to select some initial pilot nonprofits that we think would, you know, we would, um, we would work with initially. I think the Council on Aging would be one of them. They do have to be 501(c)(3). Um, any other thoughts that you have on, on who we think is, um, is needing of a sort of intake infrastructure coordinated fundraising response would be great?
Yeah, I think that we've, um, you know, Winchester is a generous community, and I think a lot of people have been looking, um, for places to donate to support, um, the pandemic response, um, and it's, uh, really a great resource that the United Way is offering at, at no cost. They take, um, no fees off of any transactions or anything, uh, but they support and facilitate the process of, uh, bringing, um, all the funds together from different residents and, uh, and then kind of spreading them out to the areas of need. And, you know, every community is different. Um, there's, um, you know, I think a misperception that everybody in Winchester is doing well, but we have seen over a period of time, especially in the last several years with the increase in housing prices, that, uh, both housing insecurity and food insecurity are, uh, very present here. And, uh, a implication in a, um, a, a situation like the one that we're in is, uh, uh, is, is dire for some, some folks, and we can't necessarily respond at the local level through various nonprofits and the interface, uh, organizations to, um, to get the resources to people fast enough almost. Um, and you can see there's, was, since this started, there was a lot of anxiety about April 1st coming and people having to, uh, pay rent, and, you know, it's, uh, we've seen a lot of requests for housing support over the past few years. So, um, if it, I, I'm not sure if the board members have an interest in pursuing this. Um, I, I think it's something that would be helpful for the town, and certainly we could move forward with a more formal recommendation at our next meeting, but, um, if there's a consensus that we should kind of pursue that, um, that, you know, I'd like to hear that from the board.
Hey, so, so this is Susan. Um, uh, this sounds very promising. I think, uh, that the United, you know, the United Way has a good track record for, um, organizing and, and, and also for fundraising for, for this kind of need. And if it's gonna save the town administration and, um, folks running these 501(c)(3) some, some work to, to, you know, coordinate and work through the United Way, I think that's, that's very promising. We should definitely look into that.
Yeah, I, I agree. Um, you know, I think this is a time where the United Way can really be, um, a support system. Um, I mean, they do this type of work all the time, but I think that their model, um, is a great fit for the situation that we're in, where we have a lot of need, um, a lot of different 501(c)(3)'s who are, you know, dealing with shortages, layoffs, all of those things, um, that are taking place because of this crisis. So I think that's, I, I think it's something to certainly pursue and look into. And I'd be happy to, you know, just given my fundraising background, I'd be happy to, to, you know, help and work with them. Um, and you, Lisa, um, you know, as you kind of determine what that will look like.
Great, I, Amy, I think specifically, um, if, if we did do this, then your input on what our fundraising page looks like, and then for everyone, um, you know, the kind of outreach that, that we think makes sense, you know, going through our own networks and other networks to get the word out.
Sure.
And also just to mention, this came, uh, to us through, uh, a resident, John Swan, who is a, a board member of the United Way and, um, very active, and so, uh, John is, um, although, you know, very busy right now, also uh, someone that we can connect with, um, for support through the process, because we really would be trying to identify the kind of three local organizations that would be, uh, managing the dispersment and the, the need. Um, so, um, yeah, Amy, I, I, I know that you've got a lot going on. I didn't want to necessarily put this on you, but it seems like it's right in your wheelhouse, you know?
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I, um, I do, but I, um, yeah, I know this is something that I, um, is very, I'm very passionate about and is important. Um, and I, like I said, particularly during this time, so anything I can do to support, I'm, I'm, I'm around.
Great, um, we'll loop you in. Jackie, I don't know if you had any comments?
No, I totally support. Thank you, Mike. I totally support the comments of the board members, and thank you, Amy. Um, and I certainly also agree with, uh, Susan's comment about United Ways, you know, you know, the way being particularly situated, um, to be particularly helpful here, so, thank you.
Thanks. Um, Lisa, were there any other sta- state of emergency related, um, comments or information you wanted to provide before we move on to the fire and police MOUs?
Um, only probably as a good segue into fire and police, which is, um, sort of, I think we're, it's, it's interesting. We're all, you know, all these cities and towns are trying to tackle the same, same issues. Um, and one of the latest threads was about, um, you know, anyone having any luck in finding a way to get first responders tested quicker, and a lot of the answers were, nope, not yet. So we, we've sort of been asking that question for several weeks right now. Um, I know there's a facility in Worcester. Um, I think the, there was a promise that there would be more, uh, at least three more sites set up across Massachusetts, um, to get first responders tested. Um, certainly, you know, if there's anyone that is either exposed or suspected of being exposed and has a 14-day quarantine, that begins to, to limit the numbers that we have that's able to respond to emergencies here. So, you know, Winchester is sort of grappling with, you know, we're a relatively small community, so we have relatively small departments that could potentially have big responses they need to deal with. We want to make sure they're healthy. We want to make sure that, you know, we, we tell them how much we appreciate them, that, looking at the morale and, and any other issues. And I think these, these MOUs definitely go a long way towards doing that, towards, you know, compensating our public safety workers that we, we, we know we appreciate them all the time, but we think we especially appreciate them in times like this. So with that, I'll kind of segue it over to the MOUs.
And before we start there, I just want to say too, these, I mentioned at the outset, these are, these meetings are intended to be kind of shorter and response-related and to help us move along the state of emergency dialogue, but also in between the, our busy public sessions and our, our regular business. So I definitely appreciate staff that is present, but please don't feel like you have to stay for our extended conversations and just sign off when you want to. It's nice to see everyone, but I know that it's, it's a busy time and there's only so many hours that people can spend on these Zoom calls. So feel free to jump off. You'll, appreciate you being there. And Lisa, I don't know if you wanted to jump into the MOUs?
Sure. So let's, let's begin with the fire MOU. The fire MOU has not changed since you last saw it. However, we have made some updates and tweaks on the financial analysis. So I think all of you should have received the, the latest analysis that was emailed to directly from HR. That showed that the fiscal year '20 impact is $89,0264. Fiscal year '21, it's $387,299. And fiscal year '22 is $358,796. So that's, you should have, I think, received this email yesterday. So that reflects the, sort of the quadruple check numbers for the fire MOU. In terms of going through the MOU itself, a lot of it is, most of it's financial. So in fiscal year '20, we're looking at a, a 2% cost of living adjustment. In fiscal year '21, it's a, a 4% cost of living adjustment, and then an additional step. And then in fiscal year '22, we're looking at a 6% cost of living adjustment and an additional step in that year as well. The fire department, based on the comps that you have seen, significantly behind peer communities. And we've had, you know, nine plus vacancies in that department. And for a fairly small department, that's, you know, that's 20% of the workforce. I think the, we actually did an analysis about what, you know, a further 20% of the workforce reduction would look like in terms of a major additional override costs when we, or costing out expected emergency expenditures to the finance committee. And we also shared that document with all you in terms of potentially needing some funds. So there is, there's a major cost to, to understaffing. And a lot of it is seen in overtime. It's also seen in terms of our inability to respond as quickly as we would like to, to emergencies. So I think it's incredibly important for us to be competitive, to be able to attract and retain firefighters. And that was a major goal of this contract. In terms of looking at this from a longer-term perspective, you know, there is a civil service committee that this contract establishes to study it, to figure out if that's the best way to move forward. There are communities that are leaving civil service. We weren't unilaterally prepared to, to do that. So we want to continue that conversation to see what makes sense for us. But the bottom line is that firefighters were the bottom in terms of peer communities, in terms of pay. We have the gaps we need to fill. This department does incredible work, incredibly hardworking, the, not just in the, the fire and, and building aspect, but also increasingly in, in paramedics and public health. And as you can see, they're just, they're paramount in, in an emergency like this.
So also, I don't know if there are any questions or comments. We are scheduling a budget advisory committee, which includes representatives from the finance committee, the school department personnel. And typically, we'll do this kind of in the fall, leading up to the, the budget season. So everybody's on the same page of what the priorities are and kind of how to connect the policy recommendations of the select board and additional, and the other boards and committees to what the budget looks like. So, you know, that's going to be an ongoing process in the next couple of weeks because it, it has been harder for us to physically get together. And so rather than having to move forward and then move backwards all the time, that's going to be an ongoing process as well. So if there are questions regarding the MOUs or the financial implications, certainly we can, Lisa can take those as we go and get, get back to individual board members, or certainly we can try to tackle some of those now. I don't know if Jackie or Susan or Amy, if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mike. And thank you, Town Manager Wong. I feel, you know, the, based on the documents that have been provided, and also kind of looking at this over the last few weeks, and also the comments in our recent meetings, I, I don't have any specific questions, any, that I did have were thoughtfully addressed by the chief. Thank you.
So this is Susan. Thanks for the opportunity to ask a couple more questions. Michelle, and I've had some back and forth about the, the finances. And Michelle confirmed my understanding that the, the impact spreadsheet is not simply the, the impact of the raises, but it's, it includes like the, just the regular raise because people might be advancing a step or something like that, and also includes the stipend impact that gets, get, the contract gets pretty, you know, complicated with the stipend stuff that I just wanted to be sure everybody was taking into account, and they, they clearly are. So I'm reassured about that. And I think, Lisa, something you just said bears repeating or just really clarifying that the, the cost of the salary increases will, to some extent anyway, be, will actually offset some of the existing costs that we have for overtime. You won't have as much overtime because you will have enough staff members that, you know, to, to staff the shifts that you, you really need to have. So, and, and as I understand it, you, you are talking to finance committee about this, and that's good, that, that they understand this contract really well and understand why, how it will benefit the town and why the increased cost makes sense. Thanks.
Thanks, Susan. I, that reminded me, I forgot to mention that another cost saving for the town is, that was mentioned by the chief on Monday, is that we've, there's a pretty significant cost to send new firefighters to the academy. So we're, we're paying for that, you know, we're paying for overtime for the, the slots that they're not filling while they're at the academy. And then when, if they come back and then they leave to another community, we've essentially expended pretty significant dollars. So there, there's, you know, many different areas that we're trying to both save money and actually, you know, maintain and keep the service that we, that we want for this town.
Lisa, on that point, can I just ask a clarifying question? In that scenario, is there a, an amount of time that they need to work for Winchester after being sort of going through the academy? They have to kind of, you know, commit to Winchester for a number of years, or is that not policy?
That is not currently part of our contract or policy. There are towns that are doing that or thinking about doing that. It's something that we've thought about here, and there's sort of mixed feelings about, about that. And whether that, that might, you know, turn away potential
Yeah, okay.
People coming here. But again, it is something that's an ongoing conversation about what we should do.
Okay. And then one last question. Can you just clarify for me the process from today on for the MOUs? Who's, who's looking at it? Who's analyzing it? What, what decisions need to be made outside of this board?
So, I mean, this has already been looked at fairly extensively internally by our internal departments. It, this has to go to Personnel Board. I believe the next meeting for Personnel Board is on Monday. So if it is approved today, then this will go to Personnel Board on Monday. And then this, this also has to go to the FinPom and to Town Meeting.
Okay. I think, you know, part of it is that invariably we have board members a part of these negotiations. And so, you know, I think it's just getting everybody up to speed when we're making really large contract increases like this coming off of an override. And there's still a question of what fiscal year '22 looks like, and if we're building a very large cliff for us to, and have to go back and have another operating override at the same time that we're looking for money to build the Lynch School. So it's, there's a lot of kind of competing factors that, you know, we've been dealing with for, for several years and just trying to keep things. The schools also, you know, our enrollment has been increasing there. And we have the need to respond to unfunded state mandates for special education and, you know, transportation costs have been increased as well. So we're, I think part of our ongoing budget advisory committee meeting is also to look at revenue relative to the pandemic and if there are impacts there. So, you know, it's, we're in a little bit different of a space than we, we have been in the past. So, you know, I think we've got a little bit of time with Town Meeting, and we don't want to use all that time because we need to move this forward. But I think we also have to be careful because these are long-term budget implications for the town and make sure that we, we get it right. Are there any other questions? I don't know, from, from board members or any comments from staff on the MOUs or anything else?
So I had a quick question. It's Susan. Are we looking, is there any reason to hold off as a select board on ratifying this or approving this today and waiting until we're in a, a regular evening session to do that? Or what are we looking to do today?
I don't think that we're looking to vote on these today. And I know Mariano wasn't able to make the call either. I mean, as I said, these were, I didn't see that these were going to be on the agenda, actually. And I, you know, we really need to kind of keep the, the separate lanes going of what we're doing. And there probably aren't a lot of people that are going to be watching these morning sessions. Not that we necessarily have high viewership during the, the evening sessions, but, but we, but, you know, I have received several calls from people about things that we've talked about in our, our regular public session. So there are some people watching and looking to see what's happening. So I think that we still need to have this budget advisory committee, you know, connect and bring the boards and commissions together. So we're all, you know, all moving forward. But I also just received some of, I mean, I just received some of the updates on some of the contracts and hadn't had a chance to look at them. So I think that with the moving targets, you know, I don't think that there's a, a need for us to rush into something that's especially so impactful for the town. And I, I really think that all board members should be, should be present for it.
Yeah, I always think of the same thing. It would be good to have full attendance, if possible, to vote on this. So, thanks.
Yeah. And I think, as I said, I saw some questions that Susan had circulated during the week. If there are specific questions about the budget impact or how these MOUs are structured, if you haven't looked at this stuff before, I mean, it's really kind of heavy lifting. And so I encourage everyone, I think, the Town Manager and Human Resources, Human Resources Department, as well as the, the chiefs have been very helpful and are very engaged in the process. So, so we'll, we'll kind of keep it as a, an agenda item and hopefully if we, we can get to a place that works for everyone. But are there other, any other questions or comments? Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Mike, before you do, can I, can I just go over the, some of the changes on the police contract? Again, we can go over this again on Monday, but I just wanted to see if there's any questions folks have. Okay, so there was actually some changes to both police contracts this morning. So I want to bring your attention to an email I sent you this morning that has the police detail language and specifically under section C, highlighted in yellow under C5 and C7, there is, there's some clarifications on the, on the municipal details and the sections in which they're referring to for the exact, the exact rate. So I don't know if, I know Chief, and Chief, you're on the call. If you want to explain this further.
Sure. Thank you, Lisa. So under section C, number five, this provision only applies to non-municipal details. And it states that these details, that would be an Eversource or some other contractor, if these details are started or continued between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM, they, excuse me, those details will be paid at time and one-half the rate. And that only pertains to section C1, which if you look up there, those are the holidays. Now, it's, it's very rare that we have, you know, details on, on some of the holidays mentioned up there. Occasionally, we do, but it's rare. But again, this only pertains to non-municipal details. It wouldn't be any, any added cost to the town. And then additionally, number seven, also under section C, that again refers specifically to non-municipal details that happen to occur on a Saturday or a Sunday. And those additionally will be paid at time and a half the rate specified in section B. And then, and then it gives the rates down there as well. So I would emphasize again that these don't have a, a cost impact on the town just on the contractor that might be doing a detail during those hours. And again, it's, it's infrequent that the police department does details between 7:00 PM and 7:00 AM. It's, it's more, more often. Sometimes a detail will run late, but we don't have too many details going all night. Sometimes the DPW will have road painting details at night, but that's not affected by this.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you.
And Chief, when you refer to non-municipal details, could you explain what, what that looks like?
Yes. So a, a non-municipal detail, again, would be Verizon, Eversource, an outside contractor coming into town to maybe do some tree work. Municipal details, that would be like school dances, the reservoir detail. If, if Jay Gill has some work that the DPW was doing, those are unaffected by this language.
Okay. And in regards to section D, so there's kind of a component of this that allows for additional so there's kind of a component of this that allows for additional members that are kind of outside the community to, to also take details. Is that, I just want that explained a little bit.
Yes, Mike. So previous to this contract, the patrolmen and the superiors had in their collective bargaining agreement that only full-time Winchester police officers would be allowed to do details. That expanded a bit in the past where we would allow sworn police officers from other agencies, sworn full-time police officers, say from Woburn or some other surrounding community, that if we had details that we couldn't fill, we'd give those communities a call. And if those officers that say work for Woburn weren't currently working, we would allow them to come into Winchester to fill, to fill the detail. This current language expands that considerably and allows, allows the Winchester Police Department, myself, to create a policy that would allow both civilian and sworn members from outside the community to come in after, after a policy was developed and after some training was provided. And that would include Winchester's current auxiliary officers and retired officers from other communities that would be allowed to come in, but they'd be allowed to come in as civilian. I, I think the, the, you know, the common term for that is "flaggers." And I, and I think this is especially important kind of as we enter into a period of time in Winchester where there's a lot of road projects that are going to be taking place between now and the end of the year. It allows me quite a bit more availability of personnel to fill all these details that, that we expect to, to take place. So traffic directors, number five, and, and if you, if you look at the parentheses there, it allows a maximum of 12 traffic directors. Those will be civilian people that, that will post for, will provide training. There'll be a policy for them and, and they'll be available as a last resort to fill details that we wouldn't otherwise be able to fill. And, you know, this was, this was something that took a, a lot of work on, on my part, on Lisa's part, on Michelle's part to, you know, kind of get this into a contract. You know, something that, not just the Winchester Police Department, the, the two unions here, but, you know, throughout the state, police have been really, really reluctant to allow flaggers to kind of come in and, you know, do a job that has traditionally been reserved for, for just police officers. So it's, it was kind of a big step taken by both unions.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a huge step. And one of the things that we've been talking about is we've been trying to get these projects going is scheduling them in a way that we would have enough details because we can't put off projects because we don't have details and we can't close every single road in town. So it's been a real obstacle for us. My concern is that we negotiated something similar in the DPW contract last year. And it was one of the sole reasons that I supported the contract, if not the sole reason, that I thought it was such a benefit to the town. And, but in going back and, and pursuing that component, you know, I was told, well, the, the DPW doesn't want to do it. So we've kind of lost one of the major bargaining pieces in that prior contract that was so beneficial to us. And where, and I certainly trust you, but where it's at the full discretion on the police side, you know, I, you know, I don't want to get to the point where, where, you know, we, we don't want to be lark, litigating with our own unions, but I also want there to be some teeth to this as it is one of the singular beneficial components to the town of the contract.
So Mike, I have nothing further on this end in terms of any updates to the MOU. So I have, actually, I have signed, I have a signed copy like sitting in front of me from the Patrol Officers Association. So I think at this point in time, it's just awaiting any further questions. The board might have an official vote. And then once it's signed, then, then the Personnel Board will, because the Personnel Board and Finance Committee, so no one else is really going to be looking at this until it's approved by the select board. So you're, you're doing your due diligence and that goes a long way. So, you know, if, if this is approved on Monday night, then we can start scheduling the other meetings and have, have this go through that process. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions from board members?
Not right now.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, we'll do roll call vote. Jackie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Susan?
Yes.
Okay. 4-0 unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone, for being on the call. And as I mentioned, if there are questions, feel free to email Lisa or staff members connected to any of the issues, but especially these, these contracts that we're going to try to keep the ball moving on.
Right. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks a lot for letting me be on the phone, not video. Next time I'll be on video.
All right. Take care.
Thanks.